Hammond City Council on May 21st, 2013. Roll call, please.
Johnny Blunt.
Here.
Jason Hood.
Here.
Bobby Martin.
Here.
Lamar Marshall.
Here.
Mike Williams.
Here. Okay. They have no items under public hearing.
Mr. President.
Mm-hmm.
I know that we were supposed to have the presentation from Bobby Mitchell today. I know he's not going to be able to make it and the mayor let me know about that earlier in the week. But I did, at the second Saturday breakfast, obviously on Saturday, I didn't mention that we were going to have a public hearing and discussion about it today, so I did invite some residents to come out. And Mrs. Bennett showed up for the purpose of that discussion. And while she was here, I was hoping that the council might advise her and give her a chance to just express some of her concerns about the grass ordinance issues while she's in here today, just in case she can't come to the next meeting.
Sure. Please. Please. Ms. Geraldine, you want to come on?
Mr. President, what we should do, for the sake of the record, is to amend the agenda to add this item for discussion, just so we can show something in the meetings.
Okay. Well, if appropriate, I'd like to amend the agenda so that we can add to the public hearing a discussion on the existing grass ordinance in the city of Hammond.
Please.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Bobby Martin.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Okay, that was a motion to amend. Do we have a motion to approve?
I think all you're going to do is just hear some of the public hearing. We just have to put that on the agenda.
Thank you. Ms. Catherine Bennett.
My name is Geraldine Bennett. I live at 1017 East Mary Avenue. My residence is located in the Our addition of Hammond, and I'm in District One. Yesterday, I walked several blocks from Hanson on N.A. James to Our, where it dead ends. And I walked one block either side of N.A. James, and that would take in Coleman, East Mary, Park and Our. And I identified at least 13 properties where the grass needs to be cut. And I'm wondering, you know, what takes so long? We have called and reported this, and I'm just trying to find out what takes so long for us to get services, especially getting grass cut. The grass is tall. I mean, just out of, it's out of hand on most of those properties. And that's just those few blocks. I didn't go, you know, two blocks over from N.A. James over to Walnut and those areas. And there are at least 13 places where the grass needs to be cut. And I'm just trying to find out what takes so long and, you know, why are we having such a hard time in that area, getting lots cleared after they've been?
Can I make a comment on that?
Mm-hmm.
Ms. Bennett, so I just, I have a, I'm over in your neighborhood a lot because I have one of my kids in my basketball team that lives down the street from you. And so, and I was having to be driving by a couple of weeks, I mean, I guess a couple of three or four days ago. And we were talking about just what you, you know, the process, and that's why I invited you to come up, because one of the things that we talked about after we approved the last set of homes to be demolished, you know, we knew that we were going to create about 12 or 13 vacant lots throughout the city of Hammond. And like you, I had some of the same concerns in my district when it comes to homeowners who live next to a vacant property or a property that's not adhering to the grass ordinance that we have in the city. And I know that it's a huge task for Bobby or for that department to keep up with. So one of the goals that we had, or we suggested, was to come up with a strategy that we can use. So hopefully, when Bobby's back from his absence from work, then we'll be able to really come up with something. And Mr. Mayor, while you're here as well, just, you know, just think about the value that that can bring to the city. We can figure out a real strategic way to do that, so that you don't have to, when you're walking in your neighborhood, you're not having to, you know, deal with grass that's out of control. Or when you have vacant lots, that will have grass that's out of control in your neighborhood, like any other neighborhood in Hammond. So I applaud you for coming out, and I hope that we'll be able to help you get that resolved this summer.
Thank you.
Mr. President, if I may?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Geraldine, before you sit down, and you had asked what the challenge is, and please understand, this is not a challenge just over in your neighborhood. We've had this challenge all over the city.
Yeah.
Councilman Blunt, you've had some. You've had some. So this is an issue. And one of the challenges that we're facing, and this will come up in the public hearing when the report is made, is all of these are private properties. In order to do anything on a piece of private property, particularly where we would be charging, because we will have to charge to do this, you have to give the landowners certain notices. And as I recall, and we will work very closely with Andre on this, you have to give them like 30 days. So it takes a while to get even the notices out on all of these properties.
Mayor, clarification, I'm sorry to interrupt you. That is a state law, isn't that, is that not correct?
I think...
I think it's our ordinances, Councilman.
On notice?
Okay. Last time we had discussed this, there were some state issues on grass cutting?
Yes, sir.
On grass cutting? I thought when it related to putting the lien on somebody?
That's it, on the lien on the private property is where the state comes in.
Paid.
Now, what the ordinance is, is that it does set a height, a grass height, that would allow us to go in and take an action. And the question realistically is, how many actions do we take per property per year? You know? Because they will prob, some of these property owners will probably never cut their grass, simply because...
And that's what's happening.
They don't know who the property owner is. We send notices to California, to New York, all over the country. And what we're doing is putting them on notice that we're leaning their property, which is exactly what's happening in many, many cases.
And you're saying that you have to give them a 30-day notice? That's a city, that's a city ordinance?
I believe it's a state law, if I'm not mistaken. And we're going to check on that, and it'll be part of the report. But if you are going to charge someone to do something on their private property, I am positive you have to give them notice to allow them an opportunity to cure the defect, whatever that defect might be.
Yes, ma'am.
Can't just go on, can't just go on your property and cut your grass.
Yeah, I understand that. I understand that. But sometimes, these properties don't, in the course of a year, don't get cut.
I understand, absolutely.
Councilman, could I have one minute? Yes, sir.
And I put on my hat, just president, the Keep Hammond Beautiful Committee. This council and Marshall know that we've been talking about this for over a year. Louis Bossa is also aware of it. And that's, and Ms. Bennett, I want you to understand, it is not just your neighborhood. The very heart of Hammond, where the old Magnolia Inn used to be, thank goodness, the thing was torn down. It was a terrible eyesore. And that grass is horrible looking, unsightly, and through Pete's intervention, it does give cut off locations. So it's not just your neighborhood, it's all over the city. My person, I think I'm going to adopt a little corner, an S&amp;S that opens store on the corner there, the S&amp;S Sporting Goods. The grass here does this, it's 48 hours, jumps that and down. I'm going to go there myself now and start cutting. This is the busiest intersection in Hammond and the others.
Oh, yes.
And it might as well be said. You know, but the problem is, and I've talked to the people, it's like Rockford says, by the time you get the notice out, you get the letter out, the grass is already grown up, so you go and cut it, and by the time you go get another letter cut again, it's already grown up again. If I was Solomon, and all his wisdom, maybe I would have a final solution. Unfortunately, I'm not Solomon. But please know that it's a citywide problem. Mr. President? It needs to be addressed.
Yes, sir.
Mr. President, if I, if I made it, if I alluded to the fact that it was just one name, I apologize for that, because I know that it's all over the city of Hammond. And I think that was the purpose of trying to come up with some type of a strategy that we might be able to use, because if we can maybe steal a plan from another city, another state, I know, I saw Ms. Bossa just walked in, and she mentioned she's a homeowner, I think, when we were here the last time in Oklahoma. And they have a process that she's able to use there that helps to keep their grass cut. So I think that process is out there. I just don't know, you know, and the whole goal was to try to create an environment where we can brainstorm and create a strategy where that might, where we might be able to do something different. Because obviously, what we're doing is not working, so it only makes sense to even try to do something different. So I'm looking forward to the meeting. I've actually offered my assistance in that area as well. And hopefully, we can, we can make some, put together a good plan that we can use that can really help our citizens over the summer. And if we try something and it doesn't work, then we can always try something else. But I just appreciate you coming out, and hopefully, we'll be able to get that off the ground by the next meeting.
Robert Field says he sent out 76 notices and is going to start again next week. So I'm curious to see. I sent him a text a second ago to see exactly if it's two processes or one. But as the mayor said, we'll give you a full detailed explanation next time.
Okay. Any other comments, questions on the side? All right, we'll move right into our regular scheduled meeting for May 21st, 2013. Roll call, please.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Here.
Bobby Martin.
Here.
Lamar Marshall.
Here.
Mike Williams.
Here.
Mayor, would you lead us in a prayer, please?
Most gracious heavenly Father, we come to you today with grateful hearts for all that you have provided. We thank you for this wonderful city. We thank you for the opportunity that we can be here to meet as free Americans to discuss the challenges of this city. Father, we pray that all of the actions that we bring before you tonight will be pleasing and nighsight. Thank you for all that you have provided, and it's in thy name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Father, Son, Holy Spirit.
Councilman Martin, would you lead us in pledges, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic forged in its hands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. All right. Do we have any council reports?
I have one report.
Okay.
I'm going to bring it up on the computer here. Just want to announce that this summer, I'm happy to announce this, that through, through the concern citizens of Lincoln Park, and also an organization called Healthy Choices 101, we're going to be able to offer, and in conjunction with the Lincoln Park Baptist Church, Reverend Merrill's Church in Lincoln Park, we're going to be able to offer a summer nutrition program at Lincoln Park Baptist Church. This is going to be very, very good. So I think it's going to be the first time we've ever had a program in Lincoln Park for nutrition that's going to be actually done in, in the area for the children. And I just want to take my hats off to Wendy Smith, who is the head of the organization, and then Healthy Choices 101, that will be providing the nutritional services. And there are some other things we're going, she's going to try to do this summer, but we're going to focus primarily on the nutrition for the, for the children. Because as you know, probably 100% of the kids that live in Lincoln Park are going to qualify for free reduced lunch in our schools. And during the school year, those children are provided with breakfast and lunch. In the summertime, which is eight weeks, those children, same children will probably not, in most cases, have access to a healthy nutritious meal for breakfast and lunch. And so this provides them with that nutrition this summer. And we're just excited about that, and I think it's going to be, it's going to go a long way in improving some of the small issues that we might consider, some people might consider small, but for them, it's going to be huge. It's also going to have a big impact on parents' cash flow this summer, because they'll be able to provide, be able to use those funds that we're going to save them to maybe use it for other things for their children. And we'll ensure that the kids are having a good nutritious breakfast and lunch four days a week and for the eight weeks of the summer. So that's all I have, Mr. President.
Okay. Mr. Martin?
Well, I just want to acknowledge that the city of Hammond, that we have quite a few activities for the young people this summer. And one of these is basketball, nutrition program, the council just mentioned, several others. But overall, we are in wealth of great activities this summer. So no child should be without any activities this summer.
Yes, sir. Any other council reports? Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. President. Despite all of the bad lots and the high lots we have, we were very successful again with Cleanest City judging. And you've read and heard that we have won again for the seventh consecutive year. Cleanest City for Division H, which is for cities between a population of 10,000 and 25,000. So I particularly want to thank the Keep Hammond Beautiful Committee, who very seldom gets accolades that they so richly deserve. So thank you, Vic. Thank you, citizens. Thank everybody for all of their hard work, including Team Hammond. I do want to, in piggybacking what you just said, there will be an after-school gathering at Mooney Avenue Park this Thursday at 4:00. So this is the second time that this has been held, I believe, Councilman, and we want to invite the public and, of course, the council to that as well. I do want to announce that we've been fairly successful in this legislative session in terms of funding. Of course, we, they are closing out the police station and the traffic control tower, which incidentally, we're taking bids on Thursday at 2:00 for the air traffic control tower. But in addition to that, we are in House Bill 2 for the Pine Hill Sewer System for $300,000. That's something that I know that Councilman Marshall's been working on for a long time. And then we also are in House Bill 2 for $100,000 for planning for the improvements of the oxidation ditch. So if those two go through, those will be two other big projects that we'll have moving forward. Want to be sure to invite everybody to our, to our big Independence Day firework celebration on July 3rd, again, held at Zemurray Park. We didn't have it last year. And if I could, Mr. President, I would like to call on Stephanie Youngblood, who's with Ladder &amp; Bloom. They have a project that's going on concerning the tragedy that occurred in Oklahoma Riz recently. So if I may, Mr. President, may I call on Stephanie, just to announce to the council what's going on with Ladder &amp; Bloom?
Good evening. I'm Stephanie Youngblood.
Would you give us an address for the record, please, ma'am? Just office?
Ladder &amp; Bloom, Classic Homes &amp; Properties, 14454 University Avenue in Hammond.
Thank you.
Okay. This morning, we started kind of a pay it forward. We're trying to gather up clean, folded clothes that we can kind of tack on with other people that are sending things to send to Oklahoma. I put it on Facebook today. I talked to Ken Benitez. People have been dropping things off by the office all afternoon. So I was kind of hoping that y'all might put it on your websites and, you know, put some feelers out there and let people know that we're going to collect from now through Friday. Our office is open from 9:00 to 5:00, and we will be sorting the clothes, girl, boy, men, women. And we're going to try to do this real fast. We're going to close it off Friday. We want to get the clothes out of here over the weekend, because these people have nothing. And, you know, Hammond has been very good to our real estate community in the past few months. Our market has picked up a lot. So we're trying to stop what we're doing and pay it forward. So if you could put it on your websites, I'd really appreciate it.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. President.
Approval of minutes. Second.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Bobby Martin.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion carried, approved.
Okay. No old resolutions, we'll move right into new business. Number one, a resolution to extend contract 2012-13 Richardson's Tree Service to furnish materials and equipment and perform the labor necessary to remove trees, haul debris and grind stumps in the amount of $40,000 annually through June 30th, 2014. Mr. Peters?
Yes, this is a, this is a resolution where we've had Richardson retain on contract. We're just trying to extend that contract for this next coming year for removal of debris. So therefore, we had to bring it to the council for approval.
I have one question, and it should be the same question for all of these that you have on here. Just from my own information, when we extended contract, is it a part of our procedure to do an annual bid? Do we ever, do we rebid on a specified period, Mr. Peters? Or do we do that, or do we just extend or recommend extension? Or do you look at other bids that might be lower in price?
All bids are done. When we bid them, then we have the option of three renewals, up to 36 months. So therefore, if we have someone on the contract and the prices are good, then what we do is we extend that contract. If we're not getting good service, then we can rebid at any given point during the year or at the end of the year. Even sometime during the year, we will have to write letters and so forth, but we can cancel a contract and rebid. But at this point, Richardson Tree Service have been doing us a good job, and the prices are, the prices are pretty much on target.
Thank you. It's a pleasure of the council.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Bobby Martin.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion carried.
All right. Number two, a resolution to extend contract 2013-12 Wright's TLC Janitorial Service for City of Hammond Buildings in the amount of $141,565.92 annually through June 30th, 2014.
Again, this is an extension of a contract with Wright Janitorial Services. We bid them, I think this is the second year, we bid it last year. We've, and he did not increase, there's no increase in its price for the duration of the contract. So therefore, we are bringing it to the council for approval, that we can extend that contract.
Second.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Bobby Martin.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Item three, a resolution for the city of Hammond to enter into a contract with Pond Food Corporation to furnish frozen dinners and food stuffs for the jail in the approximate annual amount of $39,072.2 from June 30th, 2014.
This is the food for the jail, of course, and of course, we did, this is a new contract. That's why we're, we're not extending it. We bid it. We got the bids in, and after looking at all the bids, we went with Pond Food based on their prices, and therefore, we bring it to the council for approval, because it's in excess of $25,000.
So this isn't, this is the, this is the first year that Pond is receiving the bid of the contract?
No. This is, this is the year that we bid, because the up to 36-month extension had expired, so we rebid. So therefore, I don't remember SNW had it a good while, Pond had it, then SNW now backed the Pond based on their bid price.
Okay. So what was the, what were the other bids, you know?
I don't know that information offhand, but I would have to pull that folder and see what the bid prices come in at.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Bobby Martin.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Mr. Peters, could you get those bids and email them out to the council, please, sir?
Right. I'll do that.
Thank you, ma'am. Four, resolution for City of Hammond to enter into a contract with Peregrine Corporation for utility billing services in the approximate annual amount of $43,421.40 through June 30th, 2014.
These are, this is the mailing of the, for utility billing, and so therefore, we bid that out. It went out to several companies. Peregrine, of course, came in, and we were, we have used them last term, last contract periods. And they have been doing a good job, so therefore, the recommendation of the department head that we remain with Peregrine. Send that one as well.
Mr. Peters, are we getting any complaints with reference to assumptions?
I've not received any at my office. And if there are any complaints with a particular vendor, then it should be given to me, so therefore, we could write that particular vendor, tell them their, their shortfall. And if they did not rectify it within a certain timeframe, then we would have to send them a letter discontinuing their services and rebid. So I've not received any complaints from the department.
Yes, ma'am.
Louis Bossa, if one club out and draw, you can handle it. Mr. Peters, I get eight envelopes.
Eight?
And they're, what else?
Okay.
Anyway, they come on the same day, and I have eight envelopes, so that's eight mailings. Isn't there any way of sorting that, so the city doesn't have to pay that much cost to do it? I don't see why they couldn't come in one envelope. Is there any way that that question could be asked at least once? I mean, if I get, if mine is in that situation, people that really have real estate are getting the same, same one, are they, are they?
Ms. Boss, the guy we get with here and that crew, that knows in that department, and lets it know your concern and see if we can look at that.
They come on the same day, so I know it's, if it works all throughout, but mine, it's another.
Okay. I'll bring it to their attention.
Okay. It's a pleasure of the council. Motion to approve. Second.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Bobby Martin.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Five, a resolution for the city of Hammond to purchase a Kubota excavator from Star Equipment Corporation, contract number 408463, in the amount of $34,373.69.
Security Department came with the need for an excavator, so therefore, we bring it to the council for approval. It's on state contract, so there was no bidding process. So we awarded the bid to Star Equipment. Awarded to come to P.O.T.O. Star Equipment.
Motion to approve. Second.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Bobby Martin.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thanks, Ms. Peters. Item six, a resolution to ratify and award bid received Friday, March 17th, 2013, for North Oak Street Improvement Project 420-11309. Mr. Peters?
You should have hyperlinked two documents. One is a bid summary, looks like this. The other is the bid tabulation. It gives each line item and bids. This project, as y'all are aware of it, it is from University Avenue south to the railroad tracks, ending at the railroad tracks. The estimate for this project was $480,000. We had six bidders pick up, and we received four bids. The low bidder was Bariet Construction Company. Their bid amount was 397.670, 397.670. The bid ranges, as you could see, the high bidder was Bo at 540.327.50. So we had a bit of a range, but again, the low bidder was Bariet Construction Company out of Franklinton at 397.670. We reviewed their, their bid proposal package, and everything's in order, and we do recommend award to Bariet Construction. award to Berry Construction in that amount. I'll give y'all the timeline. If we move forward with it, we'll have the pre-construction next week, and they'll begin work on June 10th. This is a 60-day job, which puts them August 10th, which is before southeastern starts. So we're trying to, we compressed the schedule, and, and they're, they're aware of the compressed schedule, but we're trying to beat that southeastern fall class coming back.
And this was already, this is in the capital budget?
Yes, this was a 2012, 2013 appropriation, and the numbers were below the estimate. Therefore, you know, it's, it's within the budget that was appropriated. The amount that was appropriated for total construction engineering and everything was, I believe it was 570, I have it right here, yes, 570,000. So we're well within that, that budget.
So in the bids for 397?
397.670, 397.670.
And that's for the construction only?
That's for the construction only, yes.
So...
The construction estimate, our estimate for construction was 480. So it's, it was, you know, 85,000.
85,000, I see.
Lower than we had anticipated. Any other questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Motion. Second.
Thank you.
Johnny Blunt?
Aye.
Jason Hood?
Aye.
Bobby Martin?
Aye.
Lamar Marshall?
Aye.
Mike Williams?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Okay. Item seven, a resolution in consideration of the reappointment of Dr. Sam McLuggage to the Planning and Zoning Board and the Board of Adjustments. Mayor Foster?
Mr. President, to the council, the next three items are reappointments to the Planning and Zoning Board. The first item for consideration is Dr. Sam McLuggage. We are asking that these terms be instituted for two years to expire on June 30th, 2015. You have the, a pretty good curriculum vitae on Dr. McLuggage, and I ask the council for approval.
Motion. Second.
Johnny Blunt?
Aye.
Jason Hood?
Aye.
Bobby Martin?
Aye.
Lamar Marshall?
Aye.
Mike Williams?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Number eight, a resolution confirming the reappointment of William Travis to the Planning and Zoning Board and the Board of Adjustments.
Mr. President, Mr. Travis's resume is not quite so extensive as Dr. McLuggage, but he has been a very good board member, been very active on the board, and I do ask the council for approval to reappoint.
So I have one question. So how old is this Bill?
How old is Bill?
He was in college back in 1997.
Well, we really can't judge ages when we make any decisions, but I guess...
I was really being sarcastic as he had on his resume, that he was, he graduated from LSU BR in 1997, so...
Oh, I see.
I was assuming that was, he must be a pretty old fellow to be...
Yeah. My guess is he's 55, 50.
That was a joke.
50?
Motion to adjourn. Second.
Johnny Blunt?
Aye.
Jason Hood?
Aye.
Bobby Martin?
Aye.
Lamar Marshall?
Aye.
Mike Williams?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Number nine, a resolution confirming the reappointment of Stanley Young to the Planning and Zoning Board and the Board of Adjustments.
We do have a letter from Mr. Young indicating that he would love to continue to serve the city and the residents of the great city of Hammond. Stan, Mr. Young has been vice chairman of the board for quite a while. He steps in when the chairman is not there. He is very knowledgeable of all of the ordinances of the city. So I do recommend Stanley Young for reappointment.
Motion. Second.
Johnny Blunt?
Aye.
Jason Hood?
Aye.
Bobby Martin?
Aye.
Lamar Marshall?
Aye.
Mike Williams?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Okay, there are no final adoption of ordinances, so we'll move right into introduction of ordinance and set public hearing number one, introduction of an ordinance to amend Chapter 22 of the Code of Ordinances relative to park operating hours and to provide for relative matters.
Been having a lot of complaints of people staying in parks way after hours. It turns out that what a lot of us thought were closing hours for the park were not in closing hours at all, particularly Clark Park. Sometimes there'll be people in there till 10:00 PM or so, and that was the hours of Clark Park, actually 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM. So I've talked to some of the residents of the Iowa district, and I know them in particular that they would love to see that the park be closed at dusk. So that this ordinance would close all parks operated by the city. Their operating hours would be dusk, dawn to dusk, except for certain times of year for Zemeryr Park, whenever there are organized events there.
Motion to introduce. Second.
Johnny Blunt?
Can I call you in or something?
Uh, you're right.
Jason Hood?
Aye.
Bobby Martin?
Aye.
Lamar Marshall?
Aye.
Mike Williams?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Public hearing is June 4th. Introduc, number two, introduction of an ordinance to authorize a waiver of the ordinance number 2000-2692 for the fiscal year 2013-14, 2014 for employees as follows. Employees who service from 1 to 20 years, a 2% salary increase. Employees working from 21 to 30 years, a 1% salary increase. Employees working over 30 years, and employees earning more than $75,000, 1% increase. Mayor Foster?
This goes hand in hand with the budget, the introduction of the budget, that will be item number three. There is an ordinance currently on the books, which the council is aware, the ordinance 2000-2692, which requires a cost of living increase for employees. It's our recommendation that we follow the 2%, 1% formula that we've done the last several years. And in order to do that, we would have to acknowledge waiver of the current ordinance.
So, Mr. Mayor, I don't know if we'll have an open discussion about that. We've been doing that. Is that a pretty routine thing that we've done, waive the ordinance? Is it, is it, is it, should the ordinance be reconsidered, revised, so that we don't have to do this every year?
I think that is an absolutely excellent idea, yes, sir. Because we have done it for the last...
I would, I would hope that, as a council, we can, you know, look at what you really want to do and, and consider that, because, you know, if we want to do that, we need to think about it long-term and how that affects the, this process, so we don't have to do this every year.
With the council's permission, you know, we thought about bringing it to the council and asking that it be rescinded, but since we were already in the budget process, we thought that we would move forward, and then after, if the council so chooses to move forward after the budget process, we could bring it back to the council after the budget process for consideration. Because I do know that it will bring a lot of discussion in.
Mm-hmm. No rush on that. Motion to introduce.
Did I get a second?
Councilman Blunt.
Okay, I'm sorry. Johnny Blunt?
Aye.
Jason Hood?
Aye.
Bobby Martin?
Aye.
Lamar Marshall?
Aye.
Mike Williams?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Number three, introduction of an ordinance to adopt the City of Hammond budget for the fiscal year 2013, 2014 in accordance with the procedures set within Section 5-03 of the City of Hammond Charter. Mayor Foster?
As, as is required in the charter, we did present a budget to each of the council members, had them in your boxes anyway, on, on May 15th, as is required. And I would assume that the council will have some public hearings, work sessions, and so forth. This is the first step in approval of the budget.
Motion to introduce.
Second. Johnny Blunt?
Aye.
Jason Hood?
Aye.
Bobby Martin?
Aye.
Lamar Marshall?
Aye.
Mike Williams?
Aye.
Motion carried. Public hearing?
Item number four.
Mr. President, could I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
Do you know when the council work sessions...
Well, I was going to discuss that right before we adjourn.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Item four, introduction of an ordinance authorizing the mayor or the director of administration to accept the donation of a certain parcel of land located at 901 East Park Avenue, Hammond, Louisiana, and to sign all documents pertinent thereto under the terms and conditions of the Act of Donation and addendum thereto. Mayor Foster?
We have been approached by Wells Fargo Bank. Evidently, they are going to or have acquired this property, 901 East Park Avenue. There is currently a structure on it. They, in our, in our discussions, they have agreed to remove the structure and to either cede or sod the lot. What our intention is with the approval of the council is to accept the donation of the lot after the house is demolished, after it's in good condition, and declare its surplus and turn it over to someone for appropriate housing, and that is in Ms. Geraldine's area. So if we can make that happen and create housing for someone, it'd be a step, huge step in the right direction.
Great. Motion to introduce. Second.
Johnny Blunt?
Aye.
Jason Hood?
Aye.
Bobby Martin?
Aye.
Lamar Marshall?
Aye.
Mike Williams?
Aye.
Motion carry, a public hearing will be held on June 4th, 2013.
Okay. Well, I've talked to a few of the council members, and I'm curious to see for a budget hearing about June 7th, which is a Friday. We've typically done a budget work session all in one day over the last few years. So I wanted to see, that's a Friday, say from maybe 9:00 or 10:00 till...
Yeah.
How long it takes. Usually, we're done by three or four.
What day are we talking about?
Friday, June 7th.
Mr. President, we do have to post that the notice of this meeting. Would the council want to have other items to be taken up, or is this only specifically for the work session?
I think it's only for the work session on that day.
Just wanted to be sure.
Yes, sir. How's that looking?
It's no conflict with me, I can do that.
Okay. All right. We'll, we'll set the date, June 7th. Let's say, how about 9:30? Split the difference.
I agree with 9:30.
9:30, okay. All right, there you go, Whitney.
Do we vote?
9:30.
Okay.
No, ma'am. You just need to post it. Who's have to post? Okay. Do we have a motion to adjourn? Motion to adjourn. All in favor? Aye. Lamar Marshall.